I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy is absent today. Councilman Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we just want to stop and just say thank you. Want to pause and just say thank you for how you love us, how you provide us a great city to live in, God, a beautiful place that you've created that we call home. Father, we just ask that during this meeting today that we will honor you in all of our words and deeds and our attitudes, God, and we just lift you up and give you all the praise and all the glory. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have an update from the EMA Director, Ms. Deborah Gather.
Good morning. I'd like to say that today we are level playing field, but we're not. We're at 330 cases in our county, 70 new cases in the last 14 days, and it's still rising. We had a lot of positives in the last drive-through that we had. And I'll give you some information on other drive-throughs and locations in just a moment. Throughout the state, we have presumed recovered statewide 13,508 cases. That's a good recovery percentage, and we want to see that keep happening. I encourage citizens to encourage their family, their friends, to do all the things we've been asking. Social distance, hand sanitize, wash hands, anything that you can do to help stop the spread. We are still under our safer-at-home order until July 3rd at 5:00 p.m. And it seems like in many locations within our city and our county that we've forgotten that we're safer at home right now. The numbers are being found by testing. They're not rising because of testing. They're rising because COVID has spread. Someone asked me about, what do we say to individuals that consider this a hoax? My suggestion to everybody is talk to the 12 families that have lost family members in Etowah County and ask them if it was a hoax. We have one family that lost three family members within as many weeks. So, we're just asking everyone to put a little bit more thought into social distancing and being in and around those that potentially are infected and don't know it. I don't wear that mask for me. I wear that mask so I don't give it to you. I couldn't, I could not live with myself if I thought I'd given it to my family or a friend or coworker and then they succumb to the COVID virus. I couldn't do that. So, I want to encourage people just to think about others and wear masks, not so much yourself, but others. That sounds pretty stern and pretty strong, but we're at that point now in Etowah County. We've been working since February 21st, and you've heard this over and over. Public health is tired of hearing from me. I'm tired of hearing from them, to be honest. But we have to keep working together to make things better for all of our citizens throughout Etowah County. If you have ideas, comments, suggestions on how to help curb COVID-19, we're open to them. But if you have a negative comment, if you think that it's a hoax, we don't have time because we're working too hard, too long, and too fast to try and curb this, at least until July 3rd. Because we do not know what decisions will be made July 3rd. But if these numbers continue to rise like this, I'm afraid of what that decision might be. So, we have to work till then. I want to, would you want me just to hand these out? Okay, and I'll give you one for file. These are the current, I'm sorry. These are the current COVID status sheets for Etowah County. And I just wanted to make sure you had one in your hand. Those are the numbers that are now updated only once a day around 10:30 a.m. That way, there's not so many numbers floating out there. So, I printed that before 10:00 a.m., so you're not going to have the most accurate. If you go to the website later, when you get home, you'll be able to have those, that information. Some things that we had discussed last week where we're going to add days and drive-throughs, and I want to give you that information now. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8:00 to 10:00. Appointments are made for COVID testing at the Etowah County Public Health Department. It's drive-through, they come out to you, and the number's 256-547-6311. We're hosting a drive-through walk-up COVID testing and hepatitis A clinic tomorrow morning at Dwight Baptist Church, 8:00 a.m. until 11:00. That's a different time than the normal ones that we've had, but the heat of the day is getting a little much, so we're going to try to do it a little earlier. So, that's 8:00 to 11:00 tomorrow at Dwight Baptist Church. That's at 520 North 29th Street. But you'll enter the clinic on North 30th Street here in Gaston. The Health Department will hold a nighttime COVID testing sometime after the 4th of July for those that work during the day. Thought that might be something convenient for people on their way home from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And that will also be held at the Health Department. So, we'll get you more information about that one when it's finalized. And we're working with, we talked with Councilwoman Toles, talked with Councilwoman Back last week, and we're working on doing a drive-through clinic at Antioch Baptist Church on East Broad. And it'll also be giving out some supplies that we may have on hand at that time. But that date's not been decided because we have so many packed together here right now. We're going to space them out just a little farther. Another thing I think that we should look at is I encourage anybody that's an event organizer or holds an event here in Etowah County to be responsible, to be a responsible event organizer. Practice social distancing. Mark spots for social distancing. Also, make sure that you have plenty of hand sanitizing stations. And even you can get portable hand washing stations that you can rent to have in place. So, I encourage that. Always ask people to wear masks or face covering. And if at all possible right now, just postpone the event just a little longer. Let's see what we can do. But any event in Etowah County, we're encouraging everybody to do those things. One other update is we've had a large spike, and I wanted to announce that. I know when I was 25 years old, I thought I was invincible. But this one shocked me. There's a large spike in those ages between 25 and 49, a 40% spike during the last two weeks of those that were tested for COVID and were positive. That's not an age group that everybody had been looking at. But 25 to 49-year-olds surged up 40% in the last two weeks. That's something I want to encourage people to think about. Those individuals could take that home to their parents, their grandparents, their children. So, take deep thought when you are tested and you test positive. Let's do contact tracing. Let's work with public health and do what we can to stop the spread. And that's all I have today for COVID. Does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Gather, you didn't, you didn't say but about the testing in East Gaston. One of the reasons why, and I'm going to say it, is because East Gaston is a hotspot.
That's right.
And it's a hotspot because people are not doing what they're supposed to do. And there's a park over there in my area. I think they're having a good time over there. But it's very important that they social distance. So, everybody needs to know that it's a hotspot over there. And, you know, maybe you just need to party in your house.
Right.
Party in your yard. And right now, not go to the park because it's spreading. But that's the reason why we want to. And so, we encourage everybody, and when they start doing the testing over there in their area, come and get tested to make sure and to see. But yes, that's a hotspot because everybody over there is having a good time.
And that's correct. We have several locations, not just in the City of Gaston, but throughout the county that are having large gatherings on the weekend. I mean, it's normal summertime fun that they're having, but we're not in normal summertime conditions. So, once again, if you're going to have an event, keep it small, keep it to your yard. That way, you can really contact, trace what's going on in your family and with your friends. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you had something. Yes. Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you can ask for that offline, but this is during council meeting, and that's all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on June the 9th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week on June the 5th through the 11th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts and to approve the minutes.
Any proclamations? Unfinished business, we have none. We have one, we have a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the zoning board of adjustment. This appointment is David Leek, District 2, for a term May 18, 2021. And reappoint David Freeman, District 7, and Charles Trotter, District 4, for expiring terms on May 18, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
We have a resolution authorizing agreement with JBW and T and Company. This is for the construction, engineering, and inspection service for the American with a Disability Act-compliant sidewalk improvement, and the amount is $59,798.18. And this is funded by a grant through the Alabama Department of Transportation with the city's 20% match being $11,960. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our first reading is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 107 South 7th Street North. And Lolita Early has offered to pay $1,000 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business? Is there any department committed report, board reports? At this time, we have... Yes.
Point of order.
Yes.
We have some, I think, some new faces in our audience today, and it might be prudent to explain our rules of how we conduct our meeting where you can't raise your hand and speak, just to make sure everybody understands. I'd be glad to do that, or if you want to...
Yeah, well, basically, you know, this is a city council meeting, and so our rules of order calls for the, you have to be recognized by, basically, you have to be recognized by the Chair in order to, in order to speak.
Don't you have to submit on Friday before Tuesday?
If you want to, you know, if you want to, if there's a request to speak.
Or be on the agenda.
Yeah, or to be on the agenda. To be on the agenda or a request to speak has to be by 12:00 noon on Friday in order to be put on our agenda to speak. At this time, we have four citizens' requests. And as I, you have Ms. Brisker, Lance Briston, Ellis Brock, Frank Leatherwood. When you come to the podium, if you give your name, your address, you have five minutes to speak. There will be no personalizing or calling any one name. Our clerk has a timer. When the timer goes off, even though you are in the middle of a sentence, because we have, then that's the end of your conversation, or that's the end of your time. So, at this time, is it, is it Rachel, am I, Brisker?
Is she here?
Raquel, is she outside? Okay, at this time, we have Lance Briston. He wants to talk about current issues, groups in the community, Confederate monument, and the First Amendment. And if you give your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lance Bristo. I live at 220 Mitchell Boulevard here in Gaston.
Is the speaker home?
We can't hear you, could you speak up, please?
Is the mic on?
As far as I can tell, it is.
Okay, you just speak in the mic, please.
I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out today. I've been in Gaston since 2014. Before that, I lived in Los Angeles County, Long Beach, California. I was the same age that my daughter is now when the riots broke out in 92. Now, that was after a verdict. What you're seeing now is the result of inaction and the inability of police forces around this country to take action against their own. Now, I wanted to talk about the First Amendment. You all stood and pledged allegiance to that flag. Once I figured out what that was, I refused to do it. I was in fifth grade when that happened. I've heard council members stand up here and say how they're going to prey on certain topics. Fine, if that helps guide you, all well and fine. But not everybody believes the same way. These symbols are oppressive to the people that don't believe the same way you do. You look at Black Lives Matter, and it's a community organization that's trying to strive for justice. You look at Blue Lives Matter, I go to their Facebook page, and what does it say? "We are waging war on the streets." Against who? People that look like me? People that think like me? This is an existential crisis for me. I live across the street from an Etowah County sheriff that flies that blue stripe. I live across the street from a Gaston City cop married to a Rainbow City cop that flies that blue stripe. When the Confederate flag started coming down across the country, the blue stripe replaced it. So, when I see that every morning as I'm getting my coffee to go to work, I understand that my life doesn't matter to those people. They're not here to protect and serve me. They're here to protect and serve the status quo. Now, Black Lives Matter, which I support, but I do not stand here and represent. I'm speaking as an individual, as a citizen. They held a march to come to City Hall to address their grievances. Now, the fact that there's a Confederate monument outside of City Hall, that's asking for trouble. They weren't here for that monument. They're still not here for that monument. Now, they may support getting rid of it, but that was something you guys brought up last week in your meeting. That was not why they were here. They were here for the list of demands that they submitted. And I would like to get a status update on where we stand as a community on that list of demands. Now, again, I greatly appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out. And I try not to buck too much. You know, I try to be co-existent. You do you, I do me. But at this time, this, I feel that I'm under attack personally. George Floyd was murdered on my birthday. Coming from California as a black man against the LAPD, I was grateful to make it to 18. On my birthday this year, I realized I haven't made it out yet. I'm still under attack. So, I ask for a little consideration. I ask for the separation of church and state. If that helps you be a better person, by all means. But it has no place when it comes to official business, public business, because the public is not all of the same faith. We don't all think the same way. But we all have the right to exist. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bristo, just for the record, there was a public safety meeting this morning at 9:00 a.m. where the leaders of Black Lives Matters and the Police Department, the Legal Department all sat down and went through every single one of their demands, line item by line item. So, they were addressed, and the leadership of that organization was satisfied with that meeting, just FYI.
Okay, we have Ellis Brock. Removal statues, what his topic is.
Thank you for having me here. My main topic is about the removal of the statue. I was born here, oh, I'm sorry, I was 3505 Greenview Avenue, Rainbow City is my address. I was born here 69 years ago, and there's a lot of history. My parents actually lived in the Emerson home that was over off Megan Boulevard, right by the school. In the 60s, it was torn down. They paid $6 a day to live there. There's a lot of history that I've heard over the years about Emerson, the monument, everything that's involved. But to me, the, the, the main thing I see is the people should be able to vote, whether it needs to be torn down or left up. It shouldn't be to the council, it shouldn't be to the mayor, it shouldn't be to the governor. It's the people. This was put here a long time ago. When it was put here, I'm sure everybody wanted it here, or it wouldn't have been here. I think there's a lot of ways they could do this. The city actually could sell the monument. They could sell the monument. Private could buy it. Sell the monument, sell the land. That'd take it out of the pocket of the city. Of course, there'd be another issue probably there. But anyway, that's, that's mainly all I have to say. I just want to, I hope it stays here. I think it's our history. It's every person's history for that monument, just like Gaston's our history. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Frank Leatherwood. If you'll come, give your name, address. His topic is also the removal of the historic monument.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for allowing me time. Honorable Mayor, City Councilmember, City Citizen, thank you for your time.
Just state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Frank Leatherwood. My address is 198 Cary Lane East, Boaz, Alabama, but I'm in Etewah County. I was growing up here most of my life. I'm here today to oppose the removal of any historical monument, marker, or tablet. And I oppose the renaming of any streets, cemeteries, or parks. History is here for us to learn from, so that hopefully we don't repeat mistakes we have made in the past. It is truly tragic when any person is murdered. There are bad people in every walk of life. Let me say that the vast majority of law enforcement are honest and hardworking men and women. They put their lives on the line for us every day. I want to thank them for their professionalism and duty these last recent protests. And I'm glad these protests are peaceful, and I hope they continue to do so. But I can't see why the murder of any citizen has to do with the removal, destruction, or attacks upon any of our history by any individ, or attacks on individuals, groups, or monuments. In Boston, for example, the 54th Massachusetts Infantry Monument was attacked by mobs and defaced. Folks, this was an all-black unit that fought for the Union. What a shame. It's also a shame that monuments and/or memorials of Spanish-American War, World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam were being defaced and attacked. Folks, slavery is heinous, and I detest it. And I don't think no one in this room had anything to do with slavery. That happened over 150 years ago, and I hope it never happens again. It is apparent that also, excuse me, it is apparent that some people like to call Confederate military and political leaders traitors. Did our country not secede from the British Empire during the American Revolution? There's some groups out West calling for secession now. New England states wanted to secede 40 years before the war between the states. Does that make them traitors? Racists. I've been hearing that word used against anyone who won't stand up and preserve their history. You could call me whatever you want, folks, but don't call me a racist. When I was a kid, I went to the middle of Michigan School down the road here. I'd even be called a half-breed because I got Cherokee blood in me that I'm proud of. And even as recently as 1999, when I was doing contract work for the railroad, I had a supervisor that called me a raghead and worse because of my skin. So, folks, don't call me racist. And everybody that stands up for our history are not racist. There's terrible groups like Klan and neo-Nazis. I detest those groups. But anyway, I usually, for the most part, back in those days, put a stop to those insults pretty quick, like. And I've heard that Confederate battle flag compared to the Nazi scumbags. What a shame. Over 30,000 Jews served the Confederacy. And the second-largest all-Jewish military cemetery is located at Richmond, Virginia. Did y'all know that? Folks, I'm not saying you have to like any part of our history. We're a free country. But please leave it in place for future generations to learn from. Also, lawlessness begets lawlessness. And bending to the demand of unruly people throwing temper tantrum only sends a message that wanting destruction is rewarded. Our country took that country for such nonsense. The only thing that's going to work is co-headed and wise dialogue for a lasting and mutual solution. So, I want to thank y'all for your time, and please don't change our history. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have comments by the Mayor and Council. Mayor, you have any comments? Going out, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, I want to thank all of those who came up today and presented their comments and, and feedback and spoke their position. That's what that flag's all about. And, and that's at least a part of what that flag's about. So, so I do want to thank those folks. I think every position that was presented today was presented in a civil fashion. So, I do appreciate that. And so, what I will say in response is, to a large degree, is this. I don't think anyone will argue that this most recent movement... that this most recent movement, this recent dialogue, this recent wave of action can reasonably be traced back to the brutal death of, of George Floyd. I think the vast majority, and, you know, vast majority is not something that needs to be taken lightly. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find someone that thinks that the murder of George Floyd and the fashion that it was done was something that was either positive or okay. And so I don't want to miss the fact that as a general rule, there have been other senseless deaths, obviously, but as a general rule, the vast majority of Americans are good people who are turned off by evil acts and, and evil positions and, and evil stances. Again, I think this nation is largely inclined to do the right thing, and the vast majority of American citizens are sickened by any type of racist rhetoric. This is not the first time that one of our speakers, I don't want to call his name, but this is not the first time that one of our speakers has come up and spoken to his heritage and spoken to the fact that, you know, he's as turned off as most people are about those Confederate symbols being used by hate groups. And, and I was encouraged when I heard that once before, and, and I'm encouraged to hear it today. But, but the thing I, I want to point out, I'm, I'm also, I also believe that this nation may, to some degree, have a blind spot to the impact that these symbols have and the longstanding hatred that they represent for, for, for black folks and for African-Americans. And, and listen, as we all make mistakes, and, and we should be allowed to make those mistakes and, and learn from them. And so believing in white supremacy at some level and slavery, that was, that was and is a mistake. Memorializing the Confederacy was and is a mistake. It flies in the face. They fired shots on that flag. And I served in the military. I can't, don't know that that can be said of a number of people, but I know there are many amongst us who served in the military. We fought for that flag. The freedoms that I realize now are as a result of that flag. And, and what I want people to, to really understand, I want to challenge people to go back, you know, I, I, you know, there's a diluted version of history that gets passed down to a number of people. Please read Alexander Stevenson's cornerstone speech, if you haven't read it. Please read his cornerstone speech and understand what he identified. And if you don't know who Alexander Stevenson, Stevens is, Alexander Stevens is the, is the Vice President for the Confederacy, or was the Vice President of the Confederacy. And in his cornerstone speech, he made very clear what the basis of the Confederacy was. Because after his speech, three weeks later, they, they fired shots on that flag. And, and again, he made it very clear, white supremacy and the fact that the African slave and black folks are, are destined to servitude. Those aren't things that are made up and twisted. That, that's the reality of, of history. And, and again, I, I think that we're far enough removed from a lot of that hateful rhetoric that a lot of people that are in this room today are truly not racist. But I think they also forget sometimes what those symbols mean. The vast majority of those symbols were erected at periods when they, when their intent was to drive home that message of hate and memorialize that message of hate. Yeah, Emma Sansom was just a farm girl. I, I understand that. I get that. But, but the message of those statues was hate. The message of the Confederacy was white supremacy and hate. And, and so this is an opportunity for us. So we have a very real opportunity now, as a society, not to try to hold on to those vestiges of hate. You know, Hitler is as much history as anybody that we studied in our textbooks. He's as much history as anybody, but I don't want a statue of Hitler anywhere in my community. And I don't want Confederate statues anywhere in my community. He, the Germans fired shots on US soldiers, and so did Confederate soldiers. And, and so I view them in the same light. We have a real opportunity now to stop this continuum of mistakes by taking a position that says to the world, we are a nation that represents all of its citizens, not just some. There, we're a nation that represents all of its citizens, and we won't support anything that even remotely lends itself to racist ideologies or hate rhetoric. And I, and I, and I want to be clear. I'm not in favor of destroying these statues, because to some people, they do represent heritage and history. And I think they, I think there's an opportunity to replace them and put them in a memorial area where they, where people, where that, where the people that view them as important can go visit them and, and, and be, and where they can be seen. I love my flag. That is the US flag, and I would put my life on the line for its principles. I voluntarily signed up for the military. And I think I've, I've demonstrated that to a large degree. I only want that flag to represent the same love that I have for it. And I want people to understand that the fact that I'm asking for, and, and, you know, I, I thought I was in nineteen sixty-eight again when I started hearing the reference to outsiders and outside agitators and influence. That's from the same playbook that was used in nineteen sixty-eight. Guys, this position that I'm taking is not from a, from a place of hate, not at all. I've got way too many white friends and way too many white colleagues to be put, pushing this from a position of hate. And I'm not wired that way. My grandfather, who experienced, who was alive when Bunk Richardson was hung from that bridge, and then two years later, that statue out there was erected. He didn't teach me hate, even though he experienced it to a large degree. He didn't teach me hate. What he taught me was love and inclusion. And I've made a couple of suggestions to this council and to the city to join other brave cities in moving forward as opposed to holding on to the hatred of the past. These, these are just suggestions. And again, none of them involve destroying any historical monument. They only involve relocating or coming up with some way that symbolizes to black citizens and African-American citizens and then, and any person of color, to be, to be quite honest, that says, we distance ourselves from the hate that these statues represent, and we want to move forward, and here's what we'd like to do. I think it's important for me to note also that there are descendants of Emma Sansom who have suggested ideas, who called and said, hey, I have an idea. If we're truly open to doing something that brings us together, I, I have an idea. There are also others who offered up suggestions, who love those, who love Emma Sansom, who went to Emma Sansom High School and loved Emma Sansom. And those people have said, hey, I've got an idea that'll give everybody kind of what they want. That's the kind of dialogue that I'm after, not hatred. So if you came here today thinking that you needed to, to, to grit your teeth and bawl your fist up because you're dealing with somebody that hates the Confederacy, then you're full of hate. Because it's not that kind of party. What we're after is a symbol that shows that we're not aligning ourselves with hate, that we're progressive enough to move forward and not align ourselves with anything that represents hate. And I respect those who have an opposing view. All I ask for you to do is understand, because I think I've demonstrated, I understand. Even though I don't agree with it, I understand the heritage argument. I do. I understand it. But when you claim heritage, you have to remember that you're holding on to heritage that flies in the face of any person of color in this country. Had you had your way, or had that heritage had its way, I wouldn't sit, be able to sit here or actively participate in our way of government. And that's not what that flag stands for. And by the way, when you read that speech, that cornerstone speech, you'll find that he calls out our founding fathers and says that the belief of the Confederacy is directly opposed to the belief of that flag. And I, and I almost chuckle when I see pickup trucks ride around with both flags flying on, on it, because one fired, fired shots against the other. Makes absolutely no sense. That's the person that doesn't know their history. Racism is this nation's original sin, folks, and we've got an opportunity to fix it. We've got an opportunity to say to history that we're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything that supports racism. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman back?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilman Williams. You know, you can always learn when you listen when every, when Councilman Williams speaks. I, I usually pick up something that I haven't, haven't heard before. I want to first talk about COVID, and I want to talk about the, our EMA Director. I don't know how many years you've done this job, but I know it's, it's been a pretty good while. So you're, you're kind of an expert on this. We had a conversation just the other day that she said she never thought she'd have to pull off the shelf her pandemic book. You know, I've learned in nineteen months, being on the council, they're prepared, the EMA is prepared. There is a plan in place for a, for a pandemic, and nothing's really left to chance. And so that playbook has been pulled off the shelf, I guess, in late February. I think it would really be smart if everybody would listen and, and pay attention to the advice that's been given. I have some really good friends on social media that just think that wearing a mask or washing your hands is just, is just silly. And, you know, that, that's just not the answer. I've read an article just two, three days ago from a pulmonologist in Montgomery that, at Jackson Hospital, if you saw that on AL.com. It's just another insightful piece of information. You know, I try to get my information on the coronavirus from people that are actually working in that field, that actually have firsthand knowledge, that are treating patients. And it's a real sobering article from a thirty-plus-year doctor that has never seen anything like this. And to read his words and to read his cautions, they pretty much align with Ms. Gaethers. This is a real serious, a real serious event. Don't let other current events take away from that event. That's, that's a real serious thing. And it's, it's costing families precious lives. It's a, and, and, and just total kind of catastrophic things to our economy. The worst thing we can do is let our grip up off of it, because then we're gonna have to probably go back to a, some type of a shutdown, and we, our, our nation can't stand that. Everybody needs to be smart. You've probably heard me now for about three or four weeks. One of my standard comments is, we all need to take a step back, take a deep breath, let our emotions kind of go to the side and go through these kind of decisions with a sober mind and, and with good, solid thought. And that applies to the COVID, and that applies to what Councilman Williams is, is talking about. You know, one thing that I look for is substantive change versus symbolic change. If I thought for one minute that we could take anything away or remove anything, and it would change the hearts of, of people, I've, I've got a, a trailer hitch on my truck, and I'd be one of the first ones out there trying to make change happen. I've said it about three or four weeks in a row, and I'm, and I'm gonna keep saying it. We have a heart problem. Until we can change our hearts, nothing's gonna change. No removal of a statue, no new laws, no new rules. That will not fix our, our hearts. We've allowed ourselves to enter into a conversation where one side is gonna win, one side is gonna lose. And, and I'm not gonna go in that conversation. That's, that's, that's not where you're gonna find me, because that's not the answer. The answer is somewhere in the middle. The answer is somewhere in the middle, and it's gonna involve people changing their hearts, and it's gonna involve people educating themselves, and it's gonna involve people thinking maybe as if I'm in that other person's shoes. I said last week, my parents told me, treat people the way you want to be treated. And that usually means putting yourself in the other person's position. So I'm just kind of asking, I'm not urging. I'm just asking, when you have your quiet time or, or when you're sitting around, try to do that. Try to put yourself, I've tried to put myself in Councilman Williams' shoes. Then I'm, I'm hoping that he'll put himself in my shoes. We have to look at these things from all different kind of viewpoints and not just, just hold on to my viewpoints. What I see a lot on social media and the news is, is the, the pronoun "I." I want this. I've always thought that. I this, I that. Or it's either "me," "me." That's an inward look, and that's not an outward look. As an elected official, I feel like I've got to quit using the words "I" and "me," and I have to use terms "you." Or since I'm in Gadsden, I'm gonna use the term "y'all." That's Y apostrophe A L L. That's how I spell it. So I have to think that, that way. I have a district that I represent that's seventy-seven percent white, about twenty-two percent black, and about one percent other. So I get phone calls every day. I get text messages. I get emails. I get social media private messages, and, and the, the gamut runs from, from A to Z. And so I have to listen, not have to. I want to listen to that. And I want to be respectful to all of those people that I represent in District Four in Gadsden. That's, I'm one of seven. We all have about five thousand people or so that we represent in our district, because we got about thirty-five thousand people in our city. And there's seven council members. So as we sit here and as we listen and as we go through our, our daily routine, you know, we, what we don't need is a real short-term, quick answer to a long-term problem. What we do need is, is, is dedicated people that'll have dialogue and conversation and learn from one another and, and go through this process in a respectful manner to where we don't have to have, I win, you lose. That, that's, that's not gonna work. I can promise you, whoever loses, their hearts are gonna be hardened more than they are today. And, and that's not the answer, because now we have, all we've done there is we've kicked the can down the road. We, we may have had a, a discussion, and we came to a conclusion, but we haven't got to the root of the problem, which is our hearts. We have to have, we have to have a conversation about our hearts. So that's, that's kind of where I am on that. And then there's, you know, there's other considerations. There's financial considerations. Last week, Ms. Rossar, our finance director, let us know that we're about one and a half million dollars, I call it underwater, year-to-date from last year. It's because Goodyear has closed, and we have this thing called the coronavirus. We've closed our city and our nation down. In good conscience, as an elected official, I can't go and encumber our city with more expenses when, at the same time, we're trying to cut expenses. We've laid off over a hundred and fifty people to lower our payroll, to lower our expenditures, because we're not bringing in as much money. There's a lot, there, there's so much more to this conversation than just "I" or "me." There's a lot that you have to consider. Those of us that sit up here, that's what we're tasked with. That's what we ran for. That's why we were elected, and that's the kind of decisions that you're gonna get from this government, is that we have to have those kind of conversations. In line with that, I've, I think I'm okay to say I'm having a community meeting, June twenty-ninth, at the Family Life Center at First Baptist Church, Gadsden. I choose that location because it's in the center of town. I go to church there. It's handicap-friendly, and I can do social distancing. It's five-thirty on June twenty-ninth. You're gonna see that advertised. I was telling some people earlier that the last meetings I've had, I've probably had maybe a total of twenty people come over the last two rounds of meetings. I'll have a meeting downtown, East Gadsden, and Country Club in Clubview. I won't say which neighborhoods, but on two of those neighborhoods, I've had zero people come to the, come, come to the community meeting. So we're, I'm, I'm still gonna have them. I encourage you to come. It's, it's open to citizens of District Four and would like for you to come. And, and that's where you can express your views. Usually, our city engineer's there. And, and that's where you can express your views. Usually our city engineer's there. Someone from the police department's there, Public Works is there. And usually somebody from the, uh, Building Inspection Department is there. Those are the areas where I get the most calls and you can find out a, a lot of answers that way. No, Mike Hilton walked out, but I want to thank Mike for the work he's been doing, uh, with a lot less people and a lot less budget in our city. I know that we're behind. I know that our neighborhoods have a lot of debris out there. But guys, they're working as hard and as fast as they can work, given the state of affairs of, of our city. We've had to lay off over 150 people. Please bear with us. Please bear with us as, as we do the job that, uh, that the Public Works does. And, uh, just want to, I want to end with the, back to the COVID and to, uh, Ms. Gaethers' comments. 70 new cases. It's not because we're testing, it's because there's 70 new cases. People are getting, people are gathering, no masks, no social distancing. And guess what? They're getting infected with the coronavirus. So just think before you do some things like that. Think before you walk in the grocery store. Uh, you know, this isn't a time about me. This is a time about you. And we need to take care of each other and we need to think about each other as, as we go through this. Unprecedented times. Unprecedented time. Everybody's hands a little bit thinner than it usually is and everybody's patience is a little bit shorter than it, than it usually is. I get it. I'm a human being too. So I understand where we are, but take a deep breath, think before you act, think before you make a comment on social media. Think of, is that how you want to be treated? As you're treating somebody else in, in a manner that may not be respectful. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say, God is great and greatly to be praised. I'll say that wherever I want to and when I want to. I just want everybody to know that. And we have a pledge every week before a meeting. I will stand up and I will pledge our flag. We have prayer. I will bow my head in reverence to that. Uh, them Sansom Monument, uh, here's been here since 1906. 1906, it cost $3,500. Uh, back in those days, that was a lot of money. Spent $500 extra for dirt to go around that monument. It's been there 114 years. And just recently, I've heard people want to get rid of it, move it, move it, move it. That is part of history. You cannot erase history. History goes on and on and on. Councilman Williams said that, uh, if I didn't hear him right, wrong, uh, hatred was taught. We gotta get over that, guys. We gotta put our faith and trust in the Lord and just move this city forward and just quit these marches. And it's fine if you want to march. If you got something you want to march for, go for it. We don't destroy property. Don't get up in people's face hollering and carrying on. We've got a terrific police force. We've, they've done nothing wrong. Don't get out there and holler at those guys and use bad words when they're out there trying to protect the citizens. They're here to protect and serve. Our police officers are. I had a petition turned in to the city clerk's office with 630 people's names. It was in favor of the, uh, statue staying where it was. I've had emails. I've had, uh, letters sent to me. And out of all those, I've had one person that just wanted it moved and they wanted it moved to a museum and that's it. One person out of all those. Uh, the clerk's office has all those letters. They have all those, uh, petitions that they've got, want it to stay where it is. She's welcome to show them to you. If I have any letters you want, I, or at Texas or emails or anything, I'll be glad to show you that. We don't need to be renaming any streets we have around here in Gadsden. Uh, this has been a big topic this week also. First person that called me, we need to rename Turn Time. Black Lives Matters, their demands had nothing to do with the statue out here, had nothing to do with renaming streets. They wanted justice for all. That's what that was all about. I think this city all needs to just get together, pray for our city, pray for our community. Pray, let's get through with this. I've found out in my many years on this earth that, uh, prayer changes things. It changes the life of people. And stuff that's gone on, we can never erase history. I mean, you can take down statues, you can do whatever you want to, but this is wrong. This is part of history. We need to leave history like it is. And we need to just build this city up. We've got a lot of problems in this city we need to take care of. We need people to get out here and work in this city to help us pay taxes, pay occupational taxes. There's jobs everywhere in this city. Uh, manufacturing places are hiring. Uh, just everywhere. You go to McDonald's, look around here at the signs up there in Wendy's. $10 an hour to start. Who would ever thought you'd work in a fast food restaurant, make 10 bucks? We've got so many jobs that people just won't take the jobs here in town. If you got kids, you know anybody that's not working, needing a job, send them to the unemployment office, the career center. Send them down here, get them a job. Uh, go to school over here to the junior college and see about getting welding, plumbing, something like that. Make more money. But we've got to come together as a community and respect our police officers and respect our town and our community. And everybody in my, and has got an opinion and I appreciate everybody's opinion. But we just need stick together, pray together and get through this, Ryan. I know it was a bad situation. Mr. Floyd got killed. I seen it on TV. I know. And I have, um, I'm sorry that happened. You know, in Atlanta, I'm sorry that happened up there, but you know, Gadsden, Alabama had nothing to do with that. We had absolutely nothing what went on in there. The little restaurant at Wendy's got burned up in Atlanta. That restaurant owner, he didn't have anything to do with what happened there. He was just trying to sell us, uh, burgers and stuff where he could make a living for his family and, and the people that worked there. We just need to all get on the same page and love one another and try to make Gadsden a better community.
Councilman Wilson?
I, I don't even know where to start, honestly. I'll, I'll start by saying this. I've, I've never been more disappointed in my life than I am at the reaction from this community over this. I've received anonymous emails that someone's gonna splatter my brains all over Broad Street. That's a direct quote, a direct quote. Told me to enjoy my pizza because it's gonna be the last one. All right? I've had dozens, if not hundreds of people, send me social media messages calling me a traitor and an outside influencer, an outsider. Let me tell y'all something. My mother graduated from Emma Sansom High School. My family's been in this town for seven generations. My aunt graduated from Emma Sansom High School. My uncle graduated from Emma Sansom High School. My mother played in the band at Emma Sansom. She played Dixie. I heard somebody else say the other day that they remember going to Emma Sansom and it was just a wonderful time and that everybody was proud to be a student there and they didn't have any problems with the rebel flag. But here's the problems, guys, with y'all who are leading this dialogue, is I'm from here. My family's from here. I've heard the stories. I've heard them from you. I've heard them from you. I know what all the nicknames mean. I know what happened in the tunnel when Gadsden High and Emma Sansom played each other and the band struck up Dixie. So you're not gonna embarrass me. You're not gonna tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about. I've been surrounded by it my whole life. I went to school here. I've lived all over this county. I lived on Cansler Avenue, a block from Forest Avenue Cemetery. I've lived in Alabama City. I've lived on Magnolia Avenue. I've lived on Hope Street. I've lived in the Backwater of Rainbow City. I've lived in Southside and now I live in the historic district in downtown. I renovated one of the oldest homes in downtown that was built two years before Mr. Bunk Richards was hung from the rafters of the train bridge over there. So nobody is gonna out-Gadsden me. Nobody's gonna out-blue collar me. Nobody's gonna tell me that I don't have a voice in this community because I do. And as to the point about where everybody in this community stands, I want to make a couple of clarifications. Counting the individuals that we heard speak here today, 11 letters sitting in front of me. Nine of them are from individuals that do not live in the city of Gadsden. Two of them are from Gadsden residents. This petition that we just referenced is 600, well, about 300 typed names in a Word document, not signatures. And the other 330 y'all, I'm not kidding, is a screenshot of somebody's Facebook post with replies that say, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what constitutes a 630 signature petition. If I would have known that Facebook comments count as petitions, I'm telling you right now, I'd have a stack of papers a mile high from people who have messaged me that said, Jason, I can never say this out loud. I'm so proud of you for speaking out because I'm too scared to say what I feel about this. I am so proud for you to come out here and say, and the other thing I'll point out, we talked about, um, demographics of our respective districts and we can have a whole nother conversation about that. But most of the districts in this community are very well-divided, believe it or not. Either predominantly white or predominantly black. My district, 49, 49, 2. I represent 49% of my district that are African-American, 49% that are Caucasian and 2% that are other. So for y'all asking me why I'm standing up here, making this suggestion, that's why. I am representing my constituents. I have the most diverse district in this city. I have to deal with both perspectives on this issue. And I'm here telling you what I believe in my heart will help this city go forward. You know, we, we spend all this time, I hear people say, you can't, you gotta move on. Nobody owned slaves. But yet, at the, in the same breath, we say, don't take our heritage. Don't move my statue. How do we ask an entire people to move on, but then demand that they not do anything that would require us to move on? The suggestion I made and people say, well, as a leader of Black Lives Matter and you take this to your people at Black Lives Matter. I'm not affiliated with the Black Lives Matter movement at all. I have no affiliation with that organization whatsoever. I don't agree with many of the things that they suggested, if we're being honest. I'm incredibly proud of our police department. I think nationally, and that's another thing you guys need to understand. Nationally, of course, there's some problems. I think our Gadsden, our local police department does a great job. And I think many, many of the members of the Black Lives Matter movement would tell you that they do a great job, with the exception of one or two isolated incidents. This isn't about the police department to me. I think we can always hold our, our city employees accountable for their actions. You know, I think, of course, if somebody does something wrong, they should be held accountable for their actions. But, but this, this idea that this whole concept of the monument just came up. Y'all, over the last 10 years, a dozen statues honoring General Forrest have been removed from parks and cemeteries and main boulevards like that, all over this country, over the last decade. This didn't come up. And somebody mentioned earlier, the gentleman mentioned earlier that when, you know, when that statue was built in 1906, he felt confident that everybody was happy about it. I can tell you right now that not everybody in Gadsden was happy that that monument went up. You know, we talk about Emma Sansom because she's easy to relate to. It's very relatable. You know, she seems like this sweet girl that was a heroine and I get that. But guys, y'all walk out there and look at that statue. Doesn't say anything about Emma Sansom. It says CSA, 1861 to 1865. I don't think I have to tell anybody in the room what those dates reference. Okay? What happened was, and a little backstory on Emma Sansom. Emma Sansom was a Cherokee who was run out of Georgia when the state repossessed her family's property. And she came to Gadsden and was here during the war. Her father died just prior to the war. After the incident in 1863 where she assisted General Forrest, she left. She got married a year later in 1864 and she left Gadsden, three years after the Civil War was over and moved to Texas and never came back here. In fact, the state of Alabama issued her a gold medal and awarded her 630 acres of land in Alabama and she refused it. Okay? This idea that Emma Sansom was this native daughter of Gadsden that rose up and that we should all memorialize is simply not true. It's propaganda. It's something that was used by the Chinese for centuries in warfare. It's something that was used by the Germans in warfare during the Holocaust. It's propaganda. This girl, I, I have no doubt in my mind that it was a tremendous act of bravery, what she did. But when you understand what General Forrest was, he was the wealthiest man in the South before the Civil War. And he made his fortune selling human slaves. Okay? Then he was stripped of his command while he was in the war at one point, only to be reinstated later by Jefferson Davis. But he was actually stripped of his command for refusing orders from a superior officer. He was widely attributed, although it's contested, with the massacre at Fort Pillow, where he murdered 273 surrendering Union soldiers that had laid their guns down. He was the first grand wizard of the Ku Klux Klan. Now, there are again, many reports that he later repealed his membership from that organization and spoke out against it. I am all for forgiveness. I believe that if General Forrest found forgiveness later in his life and found Christ, that he's forgiven. His immortal soul is forgiven. But that does not mean that he deserves to be memorialized in the heart of our city. And the last thing I want to say about that is, I have not, I made one simple suggestion hoping to move this conversation in this community forward. And that was, could we relocate it, not destroy it? See, that's what happens. It's called a false dichotomy. When you get into these arguments and somebody says, oh, you just want to destroy this statue. No, there is a middle ground between keeping it where it sits and destroying it. The only argument I made was that maybe the best place for it isn't in the heart of our community. Is there a place where we could relocate it, where it could be preserved and protected? I've even, I've got a great relationship with the tourism department. I've even reached out and asked about National Heritage Site, where people would actually come here to learn about the travesties of, of the Civil War. And yes, the heroicism of a small farm girl who was simply trying to protect her family. All of those stories don't need to be erased. I'm not asking to erase them. But there is a compromise where we can relocate that statue to a central location that people, that already has Civil War burial sites on it. It's already hallowed ground for those who, who find heritage in the Civil War. My family has, I have family buried at Forest Cemetery that fought in the Civil War. I'm, I hold no grudge against Civil War veterans. I'm not trying to demean them or deface them in any way. I simply saw it as a wonderful gesture to this community to say, hey, after all this time and all the things you've had to overcome as African-Americans, maybe you shouldn't have to drive past a monument every day that reminds you in giant letters, Confederate States of America, 1861 to 1865. That's the only suggestion I made. And somebody who has otherwise done everything right in this community, everything right. I worked from the age of 14. I've done everything I was supposed to do. And you guys threw me under the bus in a second. I am now the bottom of the barrel in this community. I've got people right now messaging me on social media telling me that I'm no, I'm good for nothing, that I don't deserve to be in this seat and that I don't know what I'm talking about. I was a hero four weeks ago in this community. And now everybody, even family members, have turned their back on me, my own family members, because I suggested that we, we relocate one statue half a mile to a cemetery that's got Civil War burial sites in it as a show of good faith to our partners and what, or, or our community members. And, and what disappoints me the most about this, and I'll get off this soapbox. I can't help but feel like we are sitting here mortgaging the brightest parts of Gadsden's future to preserve the darkest parts of its past. And I just don't get it. I don't get how entrenched we can be that we're willing to let, it's so obvious that this is driven by race. It's so obvious. And we are willing to entrench and dig in and not fight, or fight to the death, so to speak, over relocating a statue to a cemetery and renaming a street. I just, I just don't get it. But I hope that those people that used to respect me in this community over time can find a way, uh, to respect me again. But I'm speaking out for what I believe is just and what I think is right. And that, I've never seen the clock tick backwards. It's, it just doesn't happen. Things move forward. We progress. We learn. Again, I opened up last week with this statement and I'll close with it this week. In the words of the great Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better. And when you know better, do better." And all I proposed was that we do better and that, I, I apologize if that offended anybody. I don't, I don't know what else to do. It's the way I was raised. I have to speak my heart. Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
When I started this, I had 20 points to go over and I've been clicking them off all, all meeting. I would say that we are a body of different opinions. We've expressed them. And in 20-something years on this council, we're still one body. We're still one body, even though we have different opinions. Uh, I just want to say something on a patriotic side. Uh, years ago, we started having the fireworks across the river in the same uh, years ago, we started having the fireworks across the river in the same spot. And everything was set up for this year and everything was going along great. And all of a sudden, the state fire marshal says we can't shoot them off over there anymore. So we were coming real close to the fact of canceling this year because we couldn't move the site into wetlands, which are surrounded by this particular site. So the decision's been made to make it a lesser, not, not, not time, but the shells won't be one hundred percent as big. They'll be two-thirds. So it's not really, it's gonna be the same thing. And, uh, I say again, we're not celebrating fireworks anyway. We're celebrating Independence Day and July of the, that's all.
I'd just like to thank the, uh, group, uh, Black Lives Matter that came from the Gadsden chapter that came and we were able to give them some information of what they came and they asked for. Uh, and I'd just like to say to this, this council, there is, uh, I don't know if there's a group or there's anybody, but people love to see you fight. They love to see divide. And that's what they're trying to do. Um, you know, I told Johnny Cannon early today, I said, we haven't had any excitement. I said, so maybe I just should take the gavel and hit him over the head. And that would get some excitement for the community. But because, uh, and, and, and I'll say this, there is a concern about police nationwide. And the gentleman was right, and I said this in a conversation with the chief and the public safety. African-American fathers and mothers have to have a conversation with their son that Caucasian fathers do not have to have with their sons on how you deal with the police. And so I said last week, let's not lose focus. I know everybody wants us to take a stand because they want all of us up here, the three African-Americans. They want us to take a stand to remove the stature. And yes, Jason, you're getting the heat because you're Caucasian. They want you to keep the stature up there. But I'm saying, as Councilman Ben Reed just said, we gotta band together and yes, we can have a conversation, but we need to work to change the system. The symbols, but the system needs to be changed more so than anything. And that's where we need to work and that's what I said to Black Lives Matter. Keep the energy going. Vote. Get involved in the community. When there's a wrong, then correct it. Police problems, we have a civil service board. So I'm, I'm saying that we got, we got some bigger problems that we need to address and that we need to, to deal with. And then we can always have a conversation about, uh, monument. Maybe I don't feel like everybody, I'm a, I'm a history buff. I'm a history major. And so I enjoy history. I, I even go up to Chattanooga sometime and visit the civil, it's not, yeah, the Civil War Cemetery because of the symbolism that I want to learn about. That symbol helps me to do better and to let me know that I can be better. And what my forefathers suffered, I don't have to suffer. And so I just asked us to communicate. Uh, let's work together and let's try to change the system. There's implicit bias. There's redlining. There's a lot of things that we need to work on to change. And so I just asked the council, you know, let us continue to work together and stick together because there's an element out there that want us to fight. But, uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight. In fact, uh, I had a, and I said this and, uh, I'll end with this, one of my, being a former principal, I had one of my former teachers call me last week after council meeting and she said, you mean to tell me you can't keep your students in order? And so I just laughed. But anyway, uh, we're gonna work together and we're gonna look at our angles and our issues about everything and then we can see what we can work out. If nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.